Good morning, everybody.
If I can ask everybody to please stand?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the City Council. These are extraordinary times, and certainly we need to pray. I want to acknowledge my good friend, Councilman Holden, who provided me with a couple of minutes to share just before I pray, that we in the community of faith are praying for you in government and in the City Council. And we want you to know that we esteem you highly, and that later on in the month of November, we are desirous of having council support for a couple of events that we are desiring to do, to pray for government and city officials in this city. I represent thousands here in Los Angeles, oversee hundreds of churches in the country, and have millions of constituents by way of television. And I am calling the people who watch us and who care about this nation to pray. And so I'm going to ask you, if you would all bow your heads, and let's invoke God's presence upon these council members in these gatherings. Father, we thank you and praise you, first of all, that you are an excellent and mighty God. And we ask now that as the business of this city and the business of our nation continues to go forward, that you would crown these governmental leaders, these city officials, with wisdom, with knowledge, with understanding, that we may all live quiet and peaceable lives. This is commanded in the Scripture. And as we in the communities of faith join with those in politics, we believe that peace will prevail. Bless us today and these proceedings in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. God bless you.
If you all would remain standing, and if I could ask maybe some of the children from Atwater Elementary to please, the teacher maybe can help, come to the microphone here and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Do we have any volunteers?
Please stand, put your right hand over the heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, you may be seated. Thank you, Bishop. We still have only seven members present, we need ten for the quorum, so we'll begin with presentations for today, Friday. The Chair recognizes Ms. Miesekowski for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many of you remember, we began the month of October with a ceremony outside in the rotunda, which kicked off the October 1st as the month beginning Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We had with us the mayor, many members of the council, the members of the Domestic Violence Task Force in the city, and many of the nonprofit organizations that work in the intervention mode, providing services to those who are victims of violence, domestic violence. Last week, we honored the USAR officers, the 67 firefighters and paramedics who went to New York to deal with the results of the terrorism events there. With us today are some of LAPD's finest. They are dealing with a different kind of terror. They are dealing with the kind of terror that individual women and children and families sometime experience day in and day out in their regular lives. These officers are being honored today during Domestic Violence Awareness Month in recognition of the skills, professionalism, sensitivity, and humanity that they demonstrate every day in assisting the victims of domestic family violence. These officers work in a variety of different programs in the city, with the Domestic Violence Response Teams, or DART, and the Emergency Response Information Network, or AERON, throughout the city. These officers have gone through individual training to develop negotiation and mediation skills, often used to intervene in domestic conflicts. They provide guidance and assistance and sensitivity to the people who are these victims in partnership with community-based organizations, and offer and provide direction to find shelters and other safe options, safe harbors, for families who are attempting to escape through violence in their homes. Over the past few years as Public Safety Chair, I've had the pleasure of introducing officers who have been involved with LAPD in this important work. I think when I was the chair the first year, we had 18 officers here, and they were only in a few divisions. Today, as you can see, both the program in the city of Los Angeles in the Police Department is growing, and we are going to be honoring today more than 37 officers. As the participation in this program continues to increase, the awareness in the department overall and in the city overall continues to increase, and these officers are vital bridges to first intervene and then create opportunities for people and families to change their lives. So I would like to ask the folks who are with the domestic violence, the Domestic Abuse Task Force first, just to stand who's here. I hear Carol Atticoff is here with us. She is the Chair of the Commission.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miesekowski. You know, before beginning, I'd like to say I am so pleased to see that there are so many young people with us here today in council chambers, to see these important presentations honoring our heroes in the city of Los Angeles, the police that are there on the front line every day, rescuing people and saving lives. We have certainly faced a world of crisis in our nation in these past weeks, but we've also made a world of progress in the domestic violence field as we've taken on many activities related to Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In addition to the police officers who are our heroes in the day-to-day, thanks also to you, the City Council, for your persistent, strong support in providing the resources to deal with these difficult issues. Domestic violence, as every police officer and every advocate knows, is a problem that we address one person, one family, and one day at a time through a detailed and complex system. It involves law enforcement, emergency response to victims, shelter care, counseling, prosecution, and rebuilding of lives, helping victims to become independent by joining the workforce, not just with jobs, but with careers. We aim high because we can, and we can because of your support. Our thanks and our congratulations to all of the officers that we honor today.
Thank you, Carol. I would like to now ask Commander Zimmern to come forward and help read off the names so that we can present these certificates and resolutions to each of the individual officers who represent not only the 18 geographic divisions in the city, so that we have these
We want you to know that we esteem you highly, and that later on, in the month of November, we are desirous of having council support for a couple of events that we are desiring to do to pray for government and city officials in this city. I represent thousands here in Los Angeles, oversee hundreds of churches in the country, and have millions of constituents by way of television. And I am calling the people who watch us and who care about this nation to pray. And so I'm going to ask you, if you would all bow your heads, and let's invoke God's presence upon these council members in these gatherings. Father, we thank you and praise you, first of all, that you are an excellent and mighty God. And we ask now, that as the business of this city and the business of our nation continues to go forward, that you would crown these governmental leaders, these city officials, with wisdom, with knowledge, with understanding, that we may all live quiet and peaceable lives. This is commanded in the Scripture. And as we, in the communities of faith, join with those in politics, we believe that peace will prevail. Bless us today and these proceedings, in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. God bless you.
If you all would remain standing, and if I can ask maybe some of the children from Atwater Elementary to please... The teacher maybe can help, come to the microphone here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have any volunteers?
Please stand, put your right hand over the heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, you may be seated. Thank you, Bishop. We still have only seven members present, we need 10 for the quorum. So we'll begin with presentations for today, Friday. The Chair recognizes Ms. Miskowski for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. As many of you remember, we began the month of October with a ceremony outside in the rotunda, which kicked off the October 1st as the month beginning Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We had with us the mayor, many members of the council, the members of the Domestic Violence Task Force in the city, and many of the nonprofit organizations that work in the intervention mode, providing services to those who are victims of violence, domestic violence. Last week, we honored the USAR officers, the 67 firefighters and paramedics who went to New York to deal with the results of the terrorism events there. With us today are some of LAPD's finest. They are dealing with a different kind of terror. They are dealing with the kind of terror that individual women and children and families sometime experience day in and day out in their regular lives. These officers are being honored today during Domestic Violence Awareness Month, in recognition of the skills, professionalism, sensitivity, and humanity that they demonstrate every day in assisting the victims of domestic family violence. These officers work in a variety of different programs in the city, with the Domestic Violence Abuse Response Teams, or DART, and the Emergency Response Information Network, or AARON, throughout the city. These officers have gone through individual training to develop negotiation and mediation skills, often used to intervene in domestic conflicts. They provide guidance and assistance and sensitivity to the people who are these victims, in partnership with community-based organizations, and offer and provide direction to find shelters and other safe options, safe harbors, for families who are attempting to escape through violence in their homes. Over the past few years, as Public Safety Chair, I've had the pleasure of introducing officers who have been involved with LAPD in this important work. I think when I was the Chair the first year, we had 18 officers here, and they were only in a few divisions. Today, as you can see, both the program in the city of Los Angeles, in the Police Department, is growing, and we are going to be honoring today more than 37 officers. As the participation in this program continues to increase, the awareness in the department overall and in the city overall continues to increase, and these officers are vital bridges to first intervene and then create opportunities for people and families to change their lives. So I would like to ask the folks who are with the domestic violence, the Domestic Abuse Task Force first, just to stand, who's here. I hear Carol Adikoff is here with us. She is the Chair of the Commission.
Thank you, Councilwoman Miskowski. You know, before beginning, I'd like to say, I am so pleased to see that there are so many young people with us here today in council chambers, to see these important presentations honoring our heroes in the city of Los Angeles, the police that are there on the front line every day, rescuing people and saving lives. We have certainly faced a world of crisis in our nation in these past weeks, but we've also made a world of progress in the domestic violence field, as we've taken on many activities related to Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In addition to the police officers who are our heroes in the day-to-day, thanks also to you, the City Council, for your persistent, strong support in providing the resources to deal with these difficult issues. Domestic violence, as every police officer and every advocate knows, is a problem that we address one person, one family, and one day at a time, through a detailed and complex system. It involves law enforcement, emergency response to victims, shelter care, counseling, prosecution, and rebuilding of lives, helping victims to become independent by joining the workforce, not just with jobs, but with careers. We aim high because we can, and we can because of your support. Our thanks and our congratulations to all of the officers that we honor today.
Thank you, Carol. I would like to now ask Commander Zimmern to come forward and help read off the names so that we can present these certificates and resolutions to each of the individual officers, who represent not only the 18 geographic divisions in the city, so that we have these officers and these teams in every area of the city, but they are also participating through Internal Affairs, through the Threat Management Unit, and really becoming an integral part of the Police Department. As I said, we started off with perhaps just a few teams in a few areas, and today, they are integrated throughout the department, integrated in providing those services and that awareness throughout the city. So Commander?
Before I start calling off the names, there's one person who is not a recipient of an award, but is the person behind coordinating for the Los Angeles Police Department, and is the Domestic Violence Coordinator for my office. And I'd just like to acknowledge him for a minute for all the work he's put into it, and that's Detective 3, Pat Barron. And just to say that on behalf of the Chief of Police in the Los Angeles Police Department, we're very pleased and honored that the City Council and Domestic Violence Task Forces is honoring these officers for the fine work that they've done. I'm going to call them alphabetically and ask them to step up as I call their name. Detective Monica Allen. Police Officer Aaron Algren.
Ms. Miskowski? Before we continue, we have at least one member who wishes to add a few words before we continue. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you. Ms. Miskowski has shown considerable leadership on this matter, and I want to commend her for her long-term commitment to the issue of domestic violence and related issues of violence against women. But standing behind her is a veteran of the Los Angeles Police Department, who has demonstrated considerable leadership on this issue for many, many years. Then-Captain Garrett Zimmern was at the Southwest Police Station when I was the Executive Director of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference when we began the Rosa Parks Sexual Assault Crisis Center. Garrett Zimmern then demonstrated professionalism, but a heart for the issues that surround this special group of victim survivors. So I think it ought to be noted, that here we have a commander whose commitment is not located simply in the assignment that he currently has, but in the very compassion displayed toward those who find themselves so unfortunately situated. So Commander Zimmern, we wish to acknowledge and salute you for your long-term commitment to this very important issue.
Councilmember Zine.
President and colleagues, I too rise in support of this, and I remember from my 33 years with the LAPD, how it used to be a family dispute call, and how those calls developed into basically no support for the victims. And I know from the experience with Haven Hills Battery Women's Shelter, where I served as a member of the Board of Directors, the impact domestic violence has in our society. All the officers here, the detectives, the personnel, the resources of the Police Department that are put into this program, are really making changes in our society. And I joined Councilman Miskowski and my other colleagues, when we kicked this Domestic Violence Month off in the rotunda, and the words that were stated by the people in attendance. And it's through the hard work of the members of the LAPD, and through the cooperation of the prosecutors, that we have made significant changes, and turning the corner, and what was once a family dispute call, is now a felony arrest and incarceration. My acknowledgement to the fine members of the LAPD for the hard work that you're doing, continuing. Congratulations to Councilman Miskowski for carrying the banner on this, and Commander Garrett Zimmern, keep up the good work. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you very much for those very kind words. Detective 2, Sandra Betancourt. Police Officer Kasal Bun. Senior Lead Officer Terry Kamat. This gentleman is the Detective 3 in charge of the Threat Management Unit, Jeff Dunn. Police Officer Gary Ferrato. Police Officer Melanie Handline. Detective Avril Henry. Detective 3 Craig Call. Police Officer Joshua Ness. Police Officer Doug Larkin. Detective Sam McCauley. Detective Diane McNair. Detective Teresa Minter. Detective Michael Panaro. Detective Lynette Popper. Detective Kevin Puebla. Detective Harold Craig Rudy. Detective Victor Salguero. Detective Rose Smith. Police Officer Hector Villanueva. Police Officer Floyd Walton. Detective 3 Sue Willis. Detective Vida Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to invite members of the council to the luncheon that is going to be held in honor of these officers in front of Parker Center after we're done with council. They'll probably be starting before we're done with council, but if you have time afterwards to come and join them and meet them individually, I'm sure they would appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Miskowski. What's for lunch? Little incentive to keep us moving here. The Chair recognizes Ms. Galanter for a presentation.
Maybe he'll come up again.
He can come up and howl, that would be okay. Can you see yourself on television?
Yes.
We might have to move you a little bit to one side or the other. Will is going to howl if somebody else does. Tell him to bring him up here, we don't care if he howls.
We're just waiting for the traffic jam to ease here.
Can you see yourself? We might want to take them off to the side here. See all these people waiting? See that hand? Want to put them up here? Would you guys like to sit up here? Don't fall off. You can sit on this side. Geez, pretty soon they're going to be too big to lift. Okay, are we ready? I guess we're ready. We just have to get the stage set here. Members of the council, all of you know my now sadly former Chief of Staff, Adi Lieberman. And for those of you who have wondered where he went, where he went was to go see his family. We decided that after six years on the staff here, maybe it would be a good idea to check in with his kids, all of whom were born during the time that Adi worked here. So let me first of all introduce Adi's family. This is Kathy, who we've all acknowledged this morning is really the boss. And Emma. Wave, wave, Emma. Emma, wave. Okay, and Hannah? And Will, who may not wave. You gonna wave? Okay, there we go. And the reason we're here this morning is to give Adi a proper farewell. Adi came to work for me in 1995, a little bit reluctantly. He confessed to me later that he was afraid he was going to be bored. Remember that? And one thing I can guarantee is that nothing that happened in that six years was boring. Some of it was repetitive, and some of it was a little bit, you began to feel like you'd heard this speech before, but none of it was boring. And at the time, he assured me that he was going to, he would stay for a full four years, and then he was going to leave. He'd get me re-elected, and then he was going. So as you see, he's about two years behind schedule here, and in the meantime, the kids got born, the kids started to grow up, and it became obvious to everybody that it was time for the next stage of the Lieberman family's life. And so, the, you guys are on the microphone here, you gotta hang on for a minute. Hold on. The, we'll give you a chance, though. And so, it's with really a mixture of emotions that I'm here this morning to give Adi a relic from the city of Los Angeles, one of our famous plaques, so that he will remember sometime in the future when he looks back, and he says, "Now, what did I do?" All the time the kids were little. And he will have some way of recalling. We hope he'll have some finished projects to come and look at as well, which you can never tell around here. So it is with my profound thanks, you'll see I'm joined here by the rest of Adi's local fan club, my staff, many of whom, for many of whom, he was their first contact with the city, and they're all still here. So, Adi, from all of your fan club, with much gratitude for all the things you've taught us about persistence and behaving ourselves. Adi spent a lot of time reminding me to behave myself, and the test will be whether any of it stuck. That I give you this, which I can't read without my glasses, but it says all the usual flowery stuff. We wish you all the best, we expect you back on a bimonthly basis or thereabouts, you've got to keep track of the kids, see how things are going, and best of luck. You want to talk? You want to talk?
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to join my colleague, Ms. Galanter, in honoring Adi and his family. It's very meaningful for me personally, because my wife and I have known Adi for about 15 years now, since Adi and my wife were graduate students at the Wilson School at Princeton. And ever since then, I've had the chance to follow Adi's career in Los Angeles, in public policy and government and politics. He formerly worked for a former member of the California State Legislature in a significant capacity, and then, he went on and led Heal the Bay and did so many significant things at Heal the Bay, that they had a, it was a year or two ago, the annual Heal the Bay Ball was held in your honor, and it was an extraordinary event, and you well deserved it. And then, Adi went to work for my colleague, Ms. Galanter, and has done an extraordinary job for her. And when I first started thinking about suing, working in this building, in this capacity, Adi was one of the first people I contacted. I kept in close contact with him, his advice was always extraordinarily solid, and really, in an unusual way, laced with humanity. I mean, you're such a mensch, you did your job here, and in all the other jobs you've done, as such a mensch. You're going to go on and have such a successful career in the private sector, and that might be but a waystation on your way back to another extraordinary position in the public sector. You have a beautiful family, and I wish you all the best, Adi, and thanks for your friendship and your counsel over the years.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, I would be remiss if I did not rise to acknowledge the attributes that are those of Adi Lieberman, as he has made his impact well-known in this building as a dedicated Chief of Staff to our colleague, Ruth Galanter. It is not only obvious that Adi is smart, but Adi gets it as it relates to the big picture. He understands what Los Angeles is and what it can become, and has caused his talents to be put forward in such a way that future leadership in a variety of sectors will have appreciation for the greater good. So I take note of more than one occasion on which I was impressed with and benefited from Adi's insights, and it is that kind of work on the part of staff that only makes our work better, and causes us to more effectively serve our respective constituencies. And Adi, we take note of that with a great degree of pride and full acknowledgement, and wish you all the very best.
Mr. Reyes.
Well, Adi, we've been in the trenches on several occasions, on various projects and programs in our years here, sharing that role of Chief of Staff and as staff. So I think, I know that same diligence, a kind voice, and that fatherly attention that you give to your work, to your family, will definitely be one of your greatest assets in your future. And I look forward to working with you as we engage environmental issues, the city issues, and our quality of life, and I know that's dear to your heart, and I want to just thank you for your camaraderie, your support, and those kind words. Good luck.
Ms. Perry.
Adi, I just want to say congratulations, you're going to be missed from this building, but I know you're only an email away. I've always, and of course, we intend to use it to the fullest extent, and I think we were all so fortunate to have you in this building for as long as we had you, and I know the councilwoman was just very, very blessed to have your expertise, especially in the environmental area, and I think that's where we first became acquainted. I've long admired you for your talents and your commitment, and your ability to teach people, and hope to be working with you in the future, and congratulations to you and your family, and thanks for being such a great Chief of Staff.
Ms. Zine.
Well, I've always liked you because of your haircut. But in spite of that, when I was with the police protectively as a director, I came to you many occasions on issues, always accessible, always responsive, always helping resolve the matters. And I know you've been around here a long, long time, and I'm going to miss you. And I know that your lovely family is going to be happy that you're going to spend fewer hours here and more hours with them as they grow through life, but you've been a tremendous asset. I appreciate all the assistance you gave me on behalf of the police officers of the city of Los Angeles, because you were always there answering questions, always there assisting. Congratulations, and best to you and your family in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Adi, just briefly, just want to thank you and congratulate you for the job you have done, not only for the Sixth Council District, but for the entire city of Los Angeles. You have a reputation and a track record that you brought to City Hall with you. You have a reputation and a track record that you brought to City Hall with you. And so, not only did you do great things as a chief of staff to a council member, but great things for the entire city that you can be proud of. And we know that you're onto bigger and better things. But don't forget about us, all right?
Thank you.
Now it's your turn.
Oh, thank you very much. I will be very brief. Mr. President, council members, Ruth, I will treasure these last six years as one of the greatest times of my life. It was such an honor and meaningful experience to work with you, to serve the people of Los Angeles. Many people don't realize how hard all of you elected officials really work. But I don't suppose there's another job in the world where no matter what decision you make, how you vote, yes or no, there's always a long line of people ready to tell you quite publicly what a bonehead move you made that day. But each day you come here and you make those tough decisions and I really admire you for it. And thank you. I want to thank my staff and my best friends here in the city. They're a tremendous group of people. And I know we'll continue to provide tremendous service to Los Angeles and to Ruth. And I want to thank all my colleagues here in the council world, the CLA, CAO, Clerk's Office, and all the departments. There's no one more hardworking than you. And finally, I want to thank my teacher, my friend, and really my inspiration for the last six years, Councilmember Ruth Galanter. There is nobody I know who is more willing to take on a tough fight on behalf of the city, on behalf of her constituents. And she is tough when she's in battle and she usually wins. And it's been great to be a part of that and I shall truly miss it. Ruth, you will always be my hero and my inspiration and my friend. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Galanter. The chair recognizes Ms. Perry for an introduction.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have a very, very special lady standing next to me today. And her name is Helen Johnson. Helen Johnson is a resident of the Vermont Square area. And we brought her in to come in because next week is her birthday. That's not the only reason we brought her in. She is a well-known community activist in the area and has recently joined a citywide organization called the Community Garden Council. Years ago, Helen started two community gardens on Vermont Avenue and is about to start a third one. I think she's on to something really big. And I wanted all of you to know about the work that she does. And so, aside from the fact that it's her birthday and we have cake here for everyone to enjoy, I'd like to ask Helen Johnson to say a few words about the work that she is doing in the ninth council district.
Good morning. When I came down here, I think you need to know, I didn't know what I was coming for. This is nice. I did start the community gardens and as of two weeks ago, they're gonna be ours. They did belong to MTA, but thank God, I think they're ours now. We're happy about that. I am also starting a pocket park. We've wasn't heard of in Vermont, where I live. At 54th and Vermont, we have never had a pocket park in that area before. So I'm working on that now and hopefully it looks real good. I'm also here to let you know that our former mayor started fixing up our parks in the area where I am. And it has not gone well since he left. And I'm asking the new mayor while I'm here to please continue the project that Mayor Redden and I started before he left. This is really a surprise. And what I'm doing in my area, I'm doing it because I like to do it. It's not dollars a cents. It's about making things better where I live. And that's what I'm all about and thank you very much.
And Helen is being humble. She's not only put banners up and down Vermont Avenue and started a grandparent reading program in the Vermont Square Library and again created a pocket park and the community gardens. She has educated the members of Vermont Square Homeowners Association about the importance of engaging in city life and organizing block by block so that they can avail themselves of all of the resources that the city has to offer. So I just want to say happy birthday, Helen, and that we appreciate all the work that you do. Thank you.
I thank you, Ms. Perry.
Let's give Helen a big round of applause. Happy birthday, Helen. And a lovely cake. Yes, Mr. Garcetti wishes to be heard, sir. Are you gonna blow out the candle now or are you gonna blow it out elsewhere?
Helen, I wanted to add my praise to Councilmember Perry's. I know that we've seen each other at the Community Garden Council and that Glenn Dake, who was a former coordinator, is now working with me and just has the best things to say about you. So I hope that we can continue to work for the community gardens expansion throughout this city together. Congratulations, happy birthday.
All right.
I have one more presentation.
Please proceed, Ms. Perry.
I'd like to call to the podium Diane Celeste and then Ronald Langston.
Our honored guest today.
We have a very special guest here with us today. Mr. Ronald Langston is the National Director of the Minority Business Development Agency and is here for Minority Enterprise Development Week. Councilmember Han's going to join us and talk a little bit about this. This is a significant conference and we're so pleased to have him because his presence lends an even more significant layer, a level of credibility because he directs the Department of Commerce's Minority Business Development Initiatives and assists the Secretary of Commerce in implementing new strategies to be more relevant and to better serve the minority business community at the national level. He has a long and illustrious career in government service, having served in the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and as an executive assistant and commissioner for children, youth, and their families and a congressional affairs officer to the Secretary of Health and Human Services. He has been a legislative assistant to a United States senator and the list goes on. Mr. Langston is a degree holder from the University of Iowa, the Kennedy School of Government at Harvard University, and is a member of a mega sci-fi fraternity. I thought you'd like to know that. Diane is going to say a few words about him.
We won't hold it against him. Sorry.
That's all right. My father was an alpha, I'm sorry.
My, my, my.
Okay, all right, that's all right. Anyway, I will ask Diane to say, actually, Councilmember Han, please. And then Diane and then we'll have Mr. Langston speak.
The member from the 15th district.
Thank you. And I'm so pleased to welcome you here today to Los Angeles. And I had an opportunity to speak with him earlier up in the top while we were dedicating the Mayor Tom Bradley Pinnacle. And I'm so excited because one of the things I am interested in is connecting minority and women-owned businesses to the international trade industry. I feel like that's one of the biggest disconnects we have here in Los Angeles. And he has promised me that he will come back and do an international trade summit here in Los Angeles so we can finally make that connection and really help minority and women-owned businesses connect to that exploding industry. I guess I probably shouldn't say exploding when I talk about international trade. But anyway, we're glad to have you here and I'm really honored and I'm gonna hold you to that promise.
Honorable members, I'm delighted to be here this morning to share with you and to welcome Ronald Langston as our director, our new director of the Minority Business Development Agency. He was recently appointed by President George Bush. And I would like to say quickly that over the last eight years, through this partnership between MBDA, City of Los Angeles, Mayor's Office, and together with our over 250 corporate partners and resource providers, we have identified over $6 billion that have gone to minority and women enterprises and not through set-asides or preferences, but in competition. We've created an environment for them to grow and succeed. And I'm looking forward greatly to work with Director Langston because he has great vision and wants to make many new improvements in the program as well as support the LAM BOC. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Diane. Mr. Langston, please say a few words and share with us your vision.
Thank you, Councilwoman Perry, for that very nice introduction. And, Mr. President, members of the council, it is an honor to be here. Councilwoman Han, thank you for your comments. And I want you to know that we are on record to have an international trade conference. We met here early in June. This is my fifth time back to the great state of California. So on behalf of the President of the United States and the Secretary of Commerce, to whom I report, we bring your greetings. We are looking forward to a very positive relationship with the state of California, City of LA. We want to do business and we're here to do business. We want to thank you for our long relationship with you through our MBOC, our Minority Business Opportunity Committee. And we want to continue that relationship. We want to make sure that that is a very positive relationship. And as the National Director, I am very committed to it. Let me also note that minority business enterprise in this country is very important. We look forward to working with you to enhance minority business enterprise nationally. California leads the nation in the number of minority businesses in the country. You are dynamic, you are experimental, you're innovative. And we look to you for the new direction and a new drive. And that's why we're gonna be here. And, Mr. Padilla, we're gonna be working with you, sir. We're proud that I met you the other day. I look forward to meeting the other council members. Mr. Holden, thank you this morning for that wonderful presentation about former Mayor Bradley. It was very moving. As a young child, I was a very strong fan of the mayor. So I'm just absolutely honored to be here and I look forward to coming back and then working with you directly. Thank you.
On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we thank you for your visit.
Mr., thank you, Mr. President. I would like to recognize two of Mr. Langston's staff people. Melda Cabrera from the San Francisco Regional Director. If you would rise so people could see who you are. And Maria Acosta, Business Development Special from the Los Angeles District Office. Thank you very much for joining us today.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden. Mr. Holden wishes to be heard.
Members, I would like to join with Ms. Perry and Ms. Han.
Sergeants, let me ask Mr. Landry, Mr. Banks, if you could help us, what the noise level would be most appreciated. And all those who are huddled here, it's difficult to hear. Annalum Herman, please, Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, I'd like to join with Ms. Perry and Ms. Han. And welcome to meeting Mr. Langston to the City Hall Chambers. And we are going to accept your offer to assist us in supporting our small businesses. Small businesses, when all put together collectively, is the biggest business in our communities, the biggest business in our nation and keep us, our economy growing and going. And so, you have a very key position, perhaps more important than a lot of those as secretaries. And we will be counting on you. We accept your offer to support us and we need it now more than ever with the crisis which we now face in the nation and our local communities economically. We need to turn it around and with your support and help, we know we can do that.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Ms. Perry, Ms. Han, Mr. Langston, Ms. Lea, we thank you for your presentation. Chair now recognizes Mr. Padilla for a special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, colleagues. It's my privilege and honor to introduce to you today a very special visitor to our city, Senator Walter Netig, who is a special envoy of the Governor of the Province of Vienna and the Mayor of the City of Vienna. Senator? Senator Netig has been here in Los Angeles since yesterday and is staying through the weekend to prepare for an official visit by the Governor and Mayor of the City of Vienna, Mr. Michael Haupel, in May of next year. Senator Netig is not a stranger to the United States, having spent two years here in commercial studies with extensive experience and work in photographic supplies and equipment. He owns his own company in Lower Austria and has received numerous recognitions and awards from the business community there. I'd like you to join me in extending to him and present to him the certificate of warm welcome to Senator Netig on behalf of the entire city of Los Angeles. And like any good senator, I invite him to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. It's a great honor indeed to be here today. And I would like to bring you the greetings of our Lord Mayor and Governor, Dr. Michael Haupel, who is very keen to come to your country. And we're going to stage a business event in April next year. Since you've mentioned, Mr. President, I've been a citizen of Los Angeles for a few years and I've still liked to come back to this country. In a different position, of course. I have two honorary jobs. I'm the special envoy of the Lord Mayor. And on the other hand, I'm also the president of the Chamber of Commerce of Vienna, representing 85,000 members. Most of them are, like I've heard in Los Angeles now, small and middle-sized companies. So our aim is to bring the two countries, the two cities together for, I would say, for the benefit of both cities. Of course, compared to Los Angeles, we are a small city, but as I might say, a very nice and fine city. So my invitation goes to you. Come to Vienna, see for yourself that it's not only a place for music, the fine arts, and for literature, but we're also a city of excellent entrepreneurs and of excellent products. So the American people were always very welcome, especially in Vienna and in Austria. And I would like to give you this invitation, not only from the Lord Mayor, but from the people of Vienna. And thank you for your invitation today to your council and thank you for your support in our endeavor to enlarge your friendship and enlarge our connections and cooperation in business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Senator. And, Mr. Padilla, we appreciate your presentation.
Mr. Chair, if you would indulge me, since I have the microphone, I would ask colleagues and members of the public to please join me in a special musical order of business this morning. We have arranged for a very good friend of ours, a member of the city family, and a special person to tune in to the city council meeting this morning from his home in Van Nuys. Mr. Ernie Bernardi, who was first elected to the council in 1961 and retired after 32 remarkable years of service, is today celebrating his 90th birthday. And maybe the kids from Ant Water can help us out here. A former councilman, his name was Mr. Bernardi. It's his birthday today. Can you help me sing "Happy Birthday"? Let's all join together on the count of three. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Ernie. Happy birthday to you. And many more. Thank you, colleagues. Mr. Bernardi, we know you're watching. Ernie, you supported me in my first campaign. Thank you. We wish you much health and much, many more years.
I just wanted to say for those of you who did not have the opportunity to serve on the council with Ernie Bernardi, you have no idea what kind of an experience you missed. There is really nobody like Ernie. Ernie will, would, still will, say whatever is on his mind and in the unvarnished, the most unvarnished way imaginable. And it's, we could use more like Ernie.
Mr. Bernsen.
Happy birthday, Ernani.
Yes.
Thank you.
Quintessential saxophonist that Mr. Bernardi is. All right, Mr. Clerk.
Do you wish to call the roll at this time?
Do you wish to call the roll at this time?
Mr. President, colleagues, and the public watching on television, we got used to a few years ago hearing only bad news about our local schools. But I think we know that we are turning a corner with our local schools. And today, I'm here to honor one such school. Atwater Elementary School had the most improved Stanford IX test scores in Los Angeles County over the last two years. Under the leadership of its principal, Barbara Gibbs, some incredibly able and heartfelt teachers, and the parents and a community that has rallied around this school, we have shown that here in Los Angeles, we still have the best and brightest young people in the country. We today are celebrating this jump in their scores, and there was an LA Times article recently about their formula for success. And it's quite simple. It's hard work, it's asking for accountability, and it's coming together as a community. And the community's support around this school is incredible. For those of us who have been lucky enough to see the dedicated parents who spend time after school, the staff who is there, always engaging and going the extra mile to make sure that the kids can go on school trips and field trips and have the widest education, it has been each and every one of them that has brought this increase in test scores. I'm going to call first on the president of the school board, Ms. Caprice Young, who is here today, to join us in celebrating and say a few words, and then she will introduce David Tukovsky, who is the school board member for the area. Ms. Young.
These kids have worked so hard, haven't you? We have, we have set records this year in our test scores. Our first graders in L.A. Unified now are at the 56th percentile nationally, which is just incredible. And it proves that when we put money and hard work and real talent in the right place, good things happen, and that every single one of our kids can achieve and will achieve, and in fact, have achieved. And another impressive test score is that our English language learners have jumped 15 percentage points. They're all the way up at the 50th percentile now, and that's pretty great, too, for all of our kids. And it's a start. Test scores aren't the whole story, but they're a piece of it, and our kids are just doing great. It is my pleasure to introduce now David Tukovsky, the great board member from the
These have been among the most well-behaved students, waiting, waiting, and waiting to be here. They've been waving every time the camera comes by to say hello, and I think it's about time that you all wave to the camera at the same time. That's the big "Hi, Mom, hi, Dad." We are very proud of all of the group, of the community of Atwater that made this dramatic change over the last two years at this school. From the parents, to the community, to the teachers, to the administration, to all of the staff, we are so proud of you at the school district and in this city. They have truly lived the words of our former First Lady. It takes a village to raise a child. In this case, it's Atwater Village, and we're very proud of them. So, I am here to say that this school, and by the way, this school also has among the highest percentage special education kids in the entire city, which shows that the community's strength can raise the bar for all of the children in this city. And as you look at the faces and you look at the energy of these young children, they represent our city and all of what can be done if we focus together, city and school district, on families and our youth. Thank you very much for honoring them, and I bring a proclamation here today, and this group hopefully will ascend the tower now after the ceremony to go to the top to see our great city in this great city hall. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmen. I'd like to introduce our principal, Ms. Barbara Gibbs.
Thank you. I did not know I would have the opportunity to say a few words, but I'll go ahead and take them. Ladies and gentlemen, I do feel that I am representing not only these two marvelous teachers behind me, Ms. Kwan and Mr. Dima, who are just an example of the extraordinary people that I have supporting me and supporting education at Atwater Avenue School, but I also feel as if I'm representing all of the teachers in Los Angeles Unified School District today, because we have done very, very fine work over the last few years. And I do, I must add, as Mr. Tukovsky said, or Ms. Young said, I believe it, it does take support from the state and from the city and from the district, and if we all put together with dedicated teachers and dedicated people in our community, we can continue to do the job that we're about, and that is to take care and build citizens for, who will be strong supporters and a strong asset to Los Angeles City for years to come. Thank you very much.
This is Liza Zapata, who is a third grader.
Thank you.
There we go. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Clerk, next order of business? Call the roll. Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, Ms. Katsi, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Vice Sign, and Padilla. Twelve members present in a quorum, Mr. President. Thank you very much. Next order of business, please. Approval of the minutes. Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Ridley Thomas seconds. Commandoary resolutions for approval. Ms. Galanter moves, and Mr. Burnson seconds. Before starting the regular agenda, there's a couple items to be continued. Item number one, I request that this matter be continued till November 6. Colleagues, request to continue item number one till November 6 without objections. Item number 10, a request from Council District 7 to continue that matter until November 2. Request to continue item number 10, also without objection. Items numbers 2 through 4 on the regular agenda are items for which are noticed for public hearing. Items 2 through 4 before us now, colleagues, don't have cards from members of the public wishing to speak on items 2 through 4 of the regular agenda. So, seeing none, we shall deem the public hearing open and closed. Members wishing to speak on items 2 through 4. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. Items numbers 5 through 10 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 5 through 9, members, any specials? Mr. Ridley Thomas. Mr. Ridley Thomas calls item number 7 special. Any other specials? Items 5, 6, 8, and 9. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. Next item, please. Fourth with on item 9. Next item, Mr. Clerk. Items numbers 11 through 28 are items for which public hearings have not been held. And I do not have cards from members of the public to speak on those items. Any specials, members, 11 through 28? I'll ask that 28 be called special. Items 11 through 27 before us, colleagues. Any other specials? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. 12 and 13, fourth with to the mayor, please. Next item. Bring it back to item number 7 called special by Councilmember Ridley Thomas. Before coming to item 7, I believe we have a special meeting agenda today? If you wish to take that, yes, we need to call the roll adjourned, or, excuse me, recess the regular meeting and call the roll for the special. Let's, uh, excuse me, second. Let's, uh, give me a second here. Okay, let's, before going into the special meeting agenda, let's take the vote on item number 7. Mr. Ridley Thomas has left the chambers. Let the roll reflect that. Members wishing to speak on item number 7 of the regular meeting agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Now, let's call the roll on the special meeting agenda. Burnson, Galanter, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, Ms. Katsi, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Vice Sign, and Padilla. Twelve members present in a quorum, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. First item. Item number 1 is an item for which public hearing has been held. Item number 1 of the special meeting agenda, members, public hearing has been held in committee. Members wishing to speak on item 1 of the special agenda? Excuse me, Mr. President, I understand that the report has not been submitted on this item yet, so the report is not in front of you. Well, let's hold that on the desk. So, item number 2 on the special meeting is a special event motion by Mr. Burnson. Item number 2 of the special meeting agenda now before us. Members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Next item, please. And item number 3 is also a Rule 16 motion by Ms. Perry, and public hearing has not been held. And we do have a number of cards on item 3 of the special meeting agenda. I see Ms. Perry wishes to speak. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is an extremely important case to me today and to the people of the Ninth Council District, and I'm very pleased that you've been willing and flexible to take this out of order so that we can proceed. I would like to call Jasper Williams and then Michael Bannerty and Sam Ballisby and the city attorney on this case to the middle table. Can you do that, please? Come sit down at the middle table for me. And just a few short comments, and then I'd like to ask them a few questions. Some of you who were here prior to the last election cycle...
Is this for a staff presentation, Ms. Perry?
In case people have questions, not a staff presentation, in case people have questions, and I'll, that's all. I'm not going to make it very long.
Okay, and we do have a number of cards for members of the public...
Well, for the purposes of time, we can just have them assemble up there, and then we can do the cards first, if you like, after I speak.
Which is your desire, okay. Well, wait till you speak. Mr. Holden.
Has there been a public hearing on this before?
There has not been public hearing, and we do have cards on the item.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. This concerns a company called Wing Hang Noodle, run by the family of Kenny Yee, and Mr. Yee has filled out a speaker card, he'll speak later. They've applied for industrial development bonds to expand the Wing Hang Noodle Company. They currently have 41 employees. Over the next two years, intend to add 70-plus more to reach a total of 120 employees. This is a family-owned business in the Ninth Council District off of San Pedro in South Los Angeles that has employed local residents and will continue to employ local residents, many of whom speak English as a second language and walk to work. This is a very important case to me because I have made a commitment to my community to work very hard and tirelessly to bring not only new jobs, but jobs with benefits, good benefits, and jobs with a career path and jobs with a future. That is what we have here today. Mr. Yee, with these bonds, will be able to expand his business to not only exceed the living wage at the unskilled level, he has skilled and management positions. I'm going to ask for the bond council to tell us today why it is so important that we act on this matter today.
Thank you. I'll try to make it brief. Every bond transaction that goes through the city for a private company has to be approved by the state. The California Debt Limit Allocation Committee approved the transaction on August 22. The committee allows companies and the issuer basically 90 days to close the transaction. Our deadline for closing the deal is November 20. If we're not able to close the transaction by November 20, there is a performance deposit that's lost, and the deal can't go forward at that point. So, we've got, and I guess just to refine it, we haven't really been able to start the financing at this point. There's a lot of work ahead.
If you would like to proceed with the speakers now, so we can set the stage for the timeliness of this, we can do that. And then the rest of the staff, the city attorney, and Mr. Bannerty are available for questions.
Okay. Mr. Garcetti also wishes to speak. Did you wish to speak now or wait until after public comment? After public comment. Let's proceed to the public comment period, then for this item. The council calls forward Mr. Victor Franco, to be followed by John Grant. And we do have a, quite a number of cards submitted on this item, so I would ask for your brevity.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Victor Franco Jr. I'm the Deputy Director of Legislative Affairs for the Central City Association. CCA's 300 members employ over 250,000 people here in the Los Angeles region. Today, I'm here to testify in support of this motion that would rescind the living wage provision for the Wing Hang Noodle Company located in Council District 9. Earlier this year, the council seemed ready to approve an Industrial Development Authority recommendation to issue industrial development bonds to Wing Hang Noodle Company so that the company could acquire new equipment and make improvements to two sites located in Council District 9. Despite a city attorney opinion stating that industrial development bonds and similar conduit issues are not subject to the living wage, the council CED committee arbitrarily chose to attach living wage provisions to the development bonds. The full council approved the bond issue. At that time, Wing Hang had no choice but to comply with the council action. However, since council action, the bank that issued the letter of credit has determined that having to adhere to the living wage would jeopardize Wing Hang's overall cash flow capacity, thus potentially making the company unable to adequately service the bond debt. This threatens the overall survival of this company. Wing Hang currently employs 41 people. With the expansion of its business operations, the company anticipates hiring additional 79 employees within two years after project completion, for a total of 120 workers. Job creation in downtown at a time of economic recession is something that not many in this part of the city can boast about. Action today will coincide with other actions the council and the mayor have taken, making Los Angeles more business-friendly, such as business tax relief. CCA respectfully requests the council adopt the Perry motion and allow Wing Hang be released from voluntary paying all of its employees a living wage rate. Wing Hang should be permitted to continue with employment at the project pursuant to the wage rate chart provided in the Perry motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Next is Mr. John Grant, to be followed by Sharon Delugic.
Morning, Mr. President, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on this measure. I'm John Grant, in-house counsel with United Food and Commercial Workers, which represent 30,000 workers within the Los Angeles region. Our concern with this measure is the historical precedent, which it establishes enabling facilities to not pay or not abide by the living wage measure. We represent food processing workers within the Los Angeles area, companies which have been able to produce safely, efficiently, and compete on a basis throughout the region, and yet at the same time provide benefits and a living wage. Our concern is that this measure enables the subsidy of non-living wage or working poor, and we strongly urge the council to vote again. poor, and we strongly urge the council to vote against this proposition.
Thank you. Ms. Sharon Delugic to be followed by Lizette Hernandez. Is Ms. Delugic available? Let's go forward. Lizette Hernandez to be followed by Kenneth Yee.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Lizette Hernandez, and I work with L.A. Alliance for a New Economy. It's Lain's belief that the city should support living wage jobs, especially given that Wing Hang Noodle Company made a commitment with the city by signing a legal agreement to abide to the city's living wage ordinance. Lain is advocating that they be held to this commitment, particularly since we were able to verify the need for living wage jobs at the job site by talking to workers. Earlier this week, I was able to talk to three workers about their working conditions. One had been there for only one year, currently making minimum wage. Another had been there working for two years, he had not been given a raise from his initial minimum wage. A third worker had worked there for over five years and was making a little over seven dollars an hour, and this is after five years of working at Wing Hang Noodle Company. The workers say their hours are from six to four p.m., which are ten-hour shifts, and they work with heavy machinery to make these noodles. They are not provided benefits of any form, particularly health care, which was identified by one of the workers as a need at the workplace. So, Lain is interested in holding Wing Hang Noodle Company accountable to their commitment that they already made. The need is clear, and jobs at this company are not jobs with a career path, nor do they provide a decent living wage. Providing an exemption would set a bad precedent for companies who already made commitments to pay living wages and would now, as a result of this, make it easier for them to simply change their mind.
Thank you.
So, again, the city should not be in the business of subsidizing minimum wage jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kenneth Yee to be followed by Mr. Ted Hayes.
Thank you. My name is Kenneth Yee from Wing Hang Noodle Company, and I'm here to encourage the council to go with the motion to allow us to take out the previous motion regarding the living wage regarding our bond deal, and I'm here to ask and share that, I hope that all of you understand that we're a small business, and we're a small family business. We've been in Council District Nine doing business for over twenty-four years, and our entire family works at this business. We work hard to make things work, and we want to do the deal, and we entered a deal under circumstances, and we want to go back to working out the deal the way it was originally intended to go. And we want to do that because we feel that, number one, financially it wouldn't work out for our company, and number two, I feel that it was just unfair for the rules to get changed in the middle of a deal. We're a business in South Central, we have over forty employees, and we're looking to expand, we're looking to expand even though the economy doesn't look bright, and we're looking to create eighty jobs. These jobs created will most likely come to fill the needs of the constituents in that district and in that environment, or in that area. And what I'm saying is, it's the empowerment zone, our employees will come from the empowerment zone, and as it is right now, most of our employees are empowerment zone employees.
Thank you. Mr. Ted Hayes to be followed by Mr. William Delvac.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of City Council, Honorable Jan Perry, City Councilwoman. My name is Ted Hayes, I'm a homeless activist. My concern is the people at the bottom of our society. We're having enough difficulty with trying to find employment for homeless people. With what happened on November the eleventh, September the eleventh, lots of jobs are being lost, more and more unemployment is beginning to take place. If you do not allow this bond measure, then the Wing Hang Company will have to go out, and that means more people are going to become unemployed. And once people become unemployed, I have learned over the seventeen years I've lived amongst the homeless, once you're down here, getting back to the so-called mainstream of society, Mr. President, is almost virtually impossible. Now, I don't know all the ins and outs of what happened and why the city has made this arbitrary decision at this last moment, I don't have all the facts on that, but however, I do know that the city of Los Angeles is very powerful, we're in very, very, very difficult times, you are making all kinds of concessions, you're changing things, you're bringing money out of nowhere, I don't see why you can't, just even out of a moral rectitude, help this company to stay in business. We folks down here at the bottom, us poor working people, a lot of things for us go wrong, and we're trying to do well, and we need a lot of support. Just a few months ago, my organization was here asking you for help because of certain things that happens to us here at the bottom, and you came through and you helped us out. And I don't see why you cannot make some changes here to help this company stay fit. Nineteen seventy-four, they've been here, I think it's, we have a partnership with this company, and we should keep them around, so please, council, go with Councilwoman Jan Perry on this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. William Delvac to be followed by Mr. Peter Fleming.
President Padilla and honorable members of the council, William Delvac, I'm here today as a citizen, private citizen. There's, it's been raised that there's a precedent at stake here. I think indeed there is a precedent, and that is, is the city going to treat each and every business fairly and equally? No one else has been asked to pay a living wage under these circumstances. It's also been raised that people should live up to their commitments, that there was a voluntary agreement. I think each member knows the pressure and duress that a small business owner feels when he or she comes to the council seeking assistance, and in the heat of a council moment is asked to sign something or agree to something with little time to reflect. That's not a voluntary agreement, that's an exaction, and it's wrong. The city council has an established policy here, it's to make those who are subject to the ordinance live up to the ordinance. The council should let those who are not subject to the ordinance, in fact, be free of it. We ask the support of the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peter Fleming to be followed by Ms. Robin Ritter-Simmon.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Peter Fleming. I'm with the City Market of Los Angeles, the wholesale produce market at Leventon San Pedro Street. I've been there for thirty-five years, my great uncle started the business. The wholesale produce market is a grouping of small businesses. I've grown up understanding small businesses, and I feel that small business is the backbone and really the glory of the great Ninth District, where we are. So, I'm just here to say that I'm very pleased that the council is considering this change in order to, in the spirit of helping small businesses grow in the, in the city. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Ms. Robin Ritter-Simmon to be followed by Ms. Juanita Tate.
Yes, good morning, President Padilla and the distinguished members of the council. I'm here this morning on behalf of the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce in support of the Perry motion. In this very fragile economic time, I think that we need to do our best job at encouraging businesses to stay in the city of Los Angeles, and sometimes that means being creative and being flexible. The chamber appreciates the living wage ordinance, appreciates that when someone comes before you for a city contract, that you need to impose that. This business engaged and applied for an application for a bond. There was no restriction upon that application that required the living wage ordinance imposed. We are asking the council members this morning to review their decision and to really think about what is going on in the city of Los Angeles right now, and what we can all do to make sure that people have jobs, good jobs, a company that offers profit sharing to its employees. The chamber supports the motion, and we ask that you reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Ms. Juanita Tate to be followed by Mr. Mark Roth.
Good morning, city council members, and to my councilmember, Jan Perry, I, Jan, you're in a no-win situation in some instances, but you're in a win-win situation because as we marched through the streets of the Ninth District, you campaigned, as every city councilperson campaigned, on the issue. And one of the issues that we did in the grassroots campaign was found out what the needs of the community was, and the overwhelming support was for jobs. And many of us sit around, and because we have, we don't know what the strain of not being able to make bread and butter in our communities, we like to sit back and editorialize on what we think is important in communities. And so, for our community, jobs is very important. We have a fifty-two percent unemployment rate in our community. How many of you in your community can say you have a fifty-two percent unemployment rate? One of the things that we're proud of is that the city is looking at trying to do something to help this business. Many of you would want the city to do something to help a business in your community. I don't want any of you to think that I'm not concerned about union jobs and good-paying jobs, because I'll hold up to you my gold union card. With thirty-three years and nine months of experience in CWA Local 9502, I fought for people to have a decent wage. I fought for people who were underprivileged and underserved, but when I have five members in the family, and one pays the gas bill, and one pays the electric bill, and one pays the rent, and that's what's important to me. And Councilwoman Perry, stand on your own two feet, because anyone that don't understand this, we will march with you. We march with you to get elected, and we'll march with you to make this happen.
Thank you.
The bottom line is, this company is removing blight from our community, they're talking about profit sharing, the city don't even give you all profit sharing. And you want to talk about a bond, you want to talk about what needs to be done, this is in an empowerment zone. If you don't understand what an empowerment zone means, it means support and help from the federal government. So, you better find out how we're going to help these people get these jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. As Mr. Mark Roth comes forward, I've been informed that both Selma Fish and Cook Sunu wish to have their cards placed in the file, but do not desire to speak, so if that's different, please advise me. Mr. Roth.
Thank you. I am Mark Roth, and I'm president of FIBR, which is a food business industry roundtable. We're association of small ethnic and especially food manufacturers here in the Los Angeles area. We're primarily all small, family-owned businesses, in many instances, in most instances, just struggling to survive, and especially now, the economy has turned down, and now since nine eleven, it has really turned down. We pay what we can, but we need to survive, and the wages that would be imposed on Wing Hang and others like him would just really make him, make it impossible for his company to survive here in the city of Los Angeles, so I ask, I'm in support of rescinding his...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Selma Fish, your card will be placed in the file. Ms. Cook Sunu, your card will also be placed in the file. I've received a final speaker card from Mr. Tom Gilmore. Did you still wish to speak? Okay, he takes a pass, and that concludes public comment on this item. Ms. Perry, do you have thirty seconds left in the bank?
All right, very much, thank you very much. I want the city council members to know that I am going to propose today that we create a task force to discuss the expansion of the living wage, to apply to situations like this, so that when a developer or a business owner comes in for a bond and they want to expand, that they go in knowing what the requirements are, and they can create a deal so that they understand how to make sure that it pencils out so that we have living wage jobs. So, I want people to be clear, I am not opposed to the living wage, I am, I am opposed to arbitrary application of the living wage. So, I want to be very clear about that. So, with that, Mr. President, if we can have the city attorney just state her opinion as to why this should not apply, and then I'm ready to move on this.
Madam City Attorney, and then we do have at least three more members wishing to speak on the item. Madam City Attorney?
Yes. The city attorney's office didn't opine that this should not apply. That's not what we requested to opine.
Say that again.
The city attorney's office did not opine that this should not apply. The question that was asked us is, how is it that the living wage rate was required to be paid by the, by this contractor, by Wing Hang?
So, if that's not what you opined, what did you opine?
That Wing Hang voluntarily agreed to pay its employees the city's living wage rate. In reliance on Wing Hang's commitment, council approved the bond issuance. Therefore, Wing Hang must abide by its commitment unless the city council reevaluates the matter and agrees to release Wing Hang from its commitment to pay the living wage rate.
Members clear on that? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wonder if I can call Mr. Hernandez to the table for the benefit of all the members of the council who weren't here when the twelve-to-zero vote on council went through. I know there's many of the council members here who did vote for that, if you could maybe give us a little bit of the history and reserve the balance of my time. Thank you.
Members of the council, I'm reminded right now of Gil Lindsay's famous line, "He has friends on both sides, and he wants to support them both." I think that all I'm here to do is present what I believe was the conscience of the council at the time we took to vote. Historically, every time there was a question of the living wage, at that time, the council was moving towards expanding the role of the living wage. And you need to know that as the chair of the Economic Development Committee, we did not have an industrial bond issuance request that basically was not voluntary complying with the living wage. And so, we never doubted with the question, every time we asked the question in committee, and it was asked every time such a request came before us, that compliance existed. This was the first time we had a request before us where that compliance was not there. And it came to us with an opinion, basically from the city attorney, that said, basically, you did not, there was nothing that said the council had a policy to apply the living wage to industrial bond ordinances. And I took the position that it was no different than when we were trying to expand the CRA, drove with the living wage, when we were trying to expand the living wage ordinance in other areas. And so, I felt there was something the whole council had to make a decision on, and that's how we were prepared to vote on it when it came to council. And what happened is, at that time, the applicant chose to comply with the living wage ordinance, and so the council did not have that debate. Now, I wanted to kind of bring that history only because I think that is the conscience of the council in regards to the direction you go regarding the living wage ordinance, particularly in jobs that are being created in the empowerment zone, in the areas where people basically were trying to create incentives to bring jobs. But you need to know that the debate of the council has always been to try and bring quality jobs that pay the kinds of wages that allowed people to basically sustain themselves in those communities. And that was the will of a council that I sat on. And again, the policy decision has not been expanded to the industrial development bond because we have not had that debate.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Colleagues, my grandmother, Juanita Ibanez Garcetti, worked in the food industry. She was a meat packer who woke up every morning after a long night, went to work at about four-thirty a.m., came back on her break to take my father and his sister to school, and went back to her job, later coming home late to prepare for dinner and do her double shift, as many women have. It wasn't until the UFCW, the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, later on, unionized her factory, that she was able to get to a place where my grandfather and her together were able to raise their children without assistance. Make no mistake about what we're talking about today, it is much larger than one example. And for those of you who think that perhaps councilmember Perry and myself are on different sides on this, I know that in both of our hearts, we're on the same side. She just gave me a slice of cake, we're smiling at each other, and I think we're able to move forward. But we collectively have to make a long-term decision as well about industrial development authority bonds, which is not our money, but money that we pass through, about what sorts of jobs we want to give that limited pool of money to, in our hardest... sorts of jobs we want to give that limited pool of money to in our hardest-pressed areas, in our most depressed areas. And when we talk to individuals, and when you talk to workers who are there on the bottom ring, the living wage exists for a reason, and we can always reason our way out of it, too. Bad economic times, the need for jobs, but it exists there. And I was part of a council for two and a half weeks that voted, if I can extend my time, please, for twelve-to-zero, and many members on this council for this inclusion. Now, I think all of us in this council need to always be big enough that when we hear certain facts to be able to recognize those facts. And today, I think that I learned something that I didn't know about, about the sequence of how this happened, that at the starting point, we do need transparency. And that's why I applaud Councilmember Perry's leadership, and I want to go hand-in-hand forward with her in developing a policy with this council, decide where our conscience is, so that at the moment that businesses come in, we are clear with them where they should be, and so that workers that are out there, too, know where the conscience of this council and this city is. This is a seventy thousand dollar loan. The policy has been traditionally, if it's a hundred thousand dollars, it does fall into the living wage. So if we say all small businesses can't do this, then maybe we can't do it at a hundred thousand dollars. We've already said that small businesses can and should be subject to the living wage. But we're talking here about minutia, and we're talking here about instances where I think that there probably was an unfair sequence that happened to one individual and pressure exerted. So I'm willing to support Jan Perry today in making sure that this can move forward. But make no mistake that we are hand-in-hand in this, in asking that all of us draft that policy so that we don't have any more of these. There are workers today that are lucky enough, in some people's minds, to have jobs, and yet for some working people, having those jobs is almost as much torture as not having jobs. And I'm not talking about any particular place, but go there yourself and talk with individuals themselves, because I remember, and I'll close on this, my grandmother, when I was very small, telling me about the first place she worked that never got unionized. And she told me about her friends that died when they were forty, and she told me about people who could never spend any time, mothers who could never spend any time with their families because they never had that wage. And we collectively have a responsibility to go the extra mile and to make sure, and this is what we should have done in this instance, that even if we don't go fully to living wage, we ask for the maximum for those workers. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Mr. President, colleagues, since Mr. Garcetti has made a statement of support, which I was supporting, I will give my time to someone else and move on.
Mr. Reyes.
Well, it's unfortunate that we have to have these kinds of tensions to get here. I would have only hoped that the department could have worked with our councilmember Jan Perry and those of you who are working in the empowerment zone. And this is what we need to do when we start talking about this policy, is that we should have offered a different package for this company, using the empowerment zone benefits, allowing them to go back, do their bonding, whatever requirements for the bonding to get them qualified, or so they wouldn't be hurt. The fact is, we have an empowerment zone. We have benefits here. We have tax credits. Why aren't we looking at a whole set of benefits that the empowerment zone brings? We have to stop thinking so narrowly about how we're applying ourselves, our city resources, to benefit these programs. The empowerment zone is not for a purpose. We have a whole menu of benefits. We should be looking at our policies in a comprehensive way. We shouldn't be limited to putting this kind of strife, this kind of tension, and be more focused on how we benefit these programs. And I would hope that we look at this policy, and we factor in the purpose of the empowerment zone and the benefits that come with it.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Rudy Thomas.
Just very briefly, if I may, Mr. President, members of the council, there's an item in the Economic Development and Employment Committee on the issue of subsidies and incentives. It would seem to me if we were to move that item forward, and I want to suggest that we do so in the context of a joint committee meeting with the Economic Development, an Employment and Housing Community Development Committee, so that we can dispose of this. If we were to do that, the ad hoc way in which we make decisions about this matter will be effectively arrested. I stand to support Councilmember Perry and her leadership on this item, and I think we ought to dispose of it pursuant to her recommendation, and then deal with the policy questions in a standardized fashion.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I'm not going to move the previous question. I would have. But I think it's something that we need to know. I was sat on the committee with Mr. Hernandez at the time. We all were supporting livable wage. I was not attuned to the problem that this company would have. In fact, there was no elected official from the Ninth District present and voting. Ms. Walters was ill. She had not returned to work. There was no voice representing the Ninth District. And so therefore, this discussion would have taken place during her term of office. I might also say, this is the first time this concept is being applied in a bond-type measure. For an example, Trisicon in Hollywood, the author of the livable wage ordinance for the city of Los Angeles was Ms. Goldberg. Ms. Goldberg was the first one to ask for an exemption as relates to a bond measure being propagated for the purpose of building a pocket structure there. It was bonded. It was Ms. Goldberg who says, "They can't pay livable wages in order to pay down the bond that serves the bond." And so would you please vote with me for this exception? That's your district now, and I think that everybody needs to know that. So there, don't lock it in the concrete, because there may be times when you want the jobs, you put the jobs first, and you say, "Make a good faith effort." I know you're going to pay minimum wage, but make a good faith effort to pay livable wages, and let the person, the councilperson from that district, work for that company to try to make it all happen. And I think that information needed to be put on the table. I supported Mr. Hernandez then. I thought it was okay, and if nobody said it, say no. But now they are, and I'm going to enthusiastically support Ms. Perry. I want to commend you, Ira. You made a good argument about your grandmother, but the fact of the matter is that you're not going to support Ms. Perry, and you just hugged her, and Doug ain't going to like that.
Thank you, Mr. Holden and Mr. Burnson.
I move the previous question only to tie our matter.
Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the previous question. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is the end of discussion. Hold on, hold on.
Thank you. Now enjoy your cake.
We haven't voted on the item yet. That was just on the previous question. Madam City Attorney, there was a question raised earlier about whether or not we needed some advice. A closed session, does that still apply?
No, I think you're fine. You can vote on it.
Are we ready? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the item. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. Fourth with to the mayor on that. Next item, please. Special ones on the desk. The report has now been submitted and should have been distributed to each member. Okay, special one. Colleagues, item number one from the special agenda, the report has now been circulated. Members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with to the mayor on that as well. Next item, please. That completes the special agenda. Do you wish to adjourn this meeting and go back to the regular agenda? Let's do just that. Okay, on the regular agenda, item number twenty-eight was called special inasmuch as members of the public wishing to speak. Item number twenty-eight from the regular meeting agenda is before us. I have a couple of public comment cards. Council calls forward Mr. Damon Moore to be followed by Ms. Rosie Martinez.
President Padilla, members of the council, I wanted to come and thank you on behalf of the forty-seven thousand members of SEU Local Six Sixty who are working in the Los Angeles County, Orange County, and special districts in Southern California. I'm the director of government relations for the local. Our president, Alejandro Stevens, and our general manager, Nelsa Heda, wanted me to thank you for taking up this important item. The rule changes proposed by the Bush administration in the upper payment limit would be devastating to Southern California and to our patients.